My name did too, well, just within the list.
Okay, I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is a meeting in the Lemmonster School Committee. It is Monday, December 4th. We are at Apple Seeds Restaurant. It's a regular meeting, begins now at 7:00 PM. And we have a couple of guests here to help us with the pledge of allegiance. Oh, thank God the flag is here.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Very good job.
Could we just acknowledge where the students who said the pledge allegiance were from, and your names? Like what school? We'd like to give you credit.
Elizabeth O'Neil from Lemmonster High School.
Brittany Barowski from Lemmonster High School.
Sophia Hess from Lemmonster High School.
Erin Nelson from Lemmonster High School.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. You're welcome back next week. Two weeks. Okay, at this time, I'd like to open up the public forum session of the meeting. And we have a microphone right there that they just used. And I have a list here of six people that would like to speak. And your name and address for the record, please. Ethan Smith.
My name is Ethan Smith, and I live on Smith Street in Lemmonster. I'm a senior at Lemmonster High School and co-president of STUMP, which stands for Students for Transparency and Understanding of Municipal Politics. Our club was formed last year as an organic response to the detrimental budget crisis precipitated by the continuous mismanagement of school funds by the superintendent Jim Jolliker and the woeful lack of oversight by the school committee. We, as students, were frustrated and incensed by the actions of the previous school administration. STUMP's mission is simple. We use evidence-based inquiry to evaluate the fiscal decisions made by LPS administration and this committee. By evidence-based, we mean that we use the Massachusetts Public Records statute to request public documents relating to a particular part of the LPS budget, and we use those documents to come to our own conclusions. We were not prepared for how difficult our mission would be. The last four months have been an eye-opening experience. Ever since we made it our mission to educate ourselves and come to our own conclusions about budget and policy decisions made by this committee, we have been met with nothing but obfuscation, paranoia, condensation, and most of all, the implication that we are somehow pawns who do the bidding of other LPS employees with nefarious motives. My classmates and I are here tonight to talk about events we experienced about two months ago. On October 19th, 2017, myself, Sarah Ramram, and Sarah Souders had a meeting with Mr. Frado in his office. We had hopes that he would finally give us straightforward answers to our questions and provide us with documents we had requested weeks ago. In the interest of staying within my time limit, Sarah Souders will now pick up the rest of the story.
My name is Sarah Souders, and I live at 57 Biscuit Hill Drive in Lemmonster. We found ourselves wrapped up in a much longer conversation than expected. Mr. Frado believed that the three of us were at the meeting on the whim of our teacher. Our advisor, Ms. Murphy, has been very helpful in providing information on how to legally request public documents, but she never coerced us into pursuing a particular agenda. Mr. Frado also spoke to us of last year's students, referring to them as pests and asserting that my fellow members were too aggressive in past public comments. He inappropriately shared with us alarming statements about conflict concerning custodial staffing. These were issues between the administration and the union and should never have been discussed with us. Several times, he asked why we wanted the documents and what we were going to do with them. This doesn't sound alarming until one considers that public records law prohibits the records keeper from asking questions about a citizen's motivations. Overall, the meeting left us horrified. When we told Ms. Murphy what had happened, she immediately requested a meeting to discuss these concerns. We were invited to speak with Dr. Paez, Mr. Frado, Ms. Murphy, Dr. Lord, and Mrs. Cuciara. The catalyst for this meeting were three narratives we had written describing Mr. Frado's behavior in our own words. We hadn't discussed the content of or read each other's narratives. All three recounted the same words on Mr. Frado's part about the custodial staff. The meeting agenda was set by Dr. Paez, and much of the talk was over making this an educational experience and if it was okay for us to ask for information from the administration at all. But as private citizens, it is our right to request and access public documents. The focus of the meeting was turned to scrutinize our words when the problem had been with Mr. Frado. Despite the near identical descriptions, Mr. Frado denied having said this and blatantly said we were wrong. When he said this, that we were lying, something then felt wrong with that meeting. Dr. Paez didn't discuss Mr. Frado's behavior, and when the conversation...
Thank you.
Thank you. Sarah Ramram.
My name is Sarah Ramram, and I live on Pine Street in Lemmonster. So regarding the meeting that Sarah Souders was talking about, the disappointing fact is that after our meeting, Dr. Paez, with Dr. Paez, neither he nor Mr. Frado have contacted us about finding an agreeable resolution. If they are hoping that Mr. Frado's inexcusable behavior will become less atrocious with the passage of time, they are sorely mistaken. This matter will not be brushed aside as a simple misunderstanding. A formal apology from Mr. Frado for his unprofessional behavior is the least he owes to us. If this committee would like to ask questions about STUMP or what happened during our meetings with Mr. Frado and Dr. Paez, we welcome the opportunity to be placed on the official agenda for the next committee meeting. If not, that's fine, we'll be back. Moving forward, we hope to work with the school committee and the new administration to make sure that the public records requests are processed in accordance with Massachusetts state law. Specifically, the records access officer will respond within 10 days either by providing the requested documents or a written explanation as to why those records are unavailable, and the records access officer or his designate will never again require the requister to specify the purpose of a request. We will no longer tolerate any implication that we do not deserve or don't understand the requested documents. We will no longer tolerate being treated as pests by Mr. Frado or any other member of this administration. If Mr. Frado finds our requests annoying, Massachusetts general law requires that he keeps it to himself. Thank you and good night.
Thank you. Next is Gary Zimmerman.
Gary Zimmerman, Lynn Haven Road, Lemmonster. I want to bring up two things if I have time. First, I was here a couple of years ago when something happened with the superintendent in giving out a raise and giving out an extended contract. And then I got a rumor a couple, maybe a month or so ago, that somebody was possibly getting a double raise or whatever it was. So through the Freedom Act, I investigated. It wasn't a completely true fact, but it got me thinking again with the new school committee coming in place, that somebody should advocate again to the state that, and nothing against any future superintendent or anything, that the school committee should, and whether you can write a resolution, they sign in the contract or it's put in the contract, but any direct raise or direct stipend or extended contract should be approved by every school committee member and not allow the superintendent to do it on his own or her own. And that'll just hold accountability to that position. The second thing I'm going to bring up a little bit, I don't know if you guys wrote the contract for the janitors or not. I was a janitor when I got laid off for a few months, and it was kind of interesting watching the other, and it was in another town, it wasn't in this town. One of the things I think you should put in the contract, if any function, and I used to run things at Fallbrook, and I did a volunteer to the all-middle school, and during the nights that the janitors are already there, I don't think they should get extra money. I look at that as double dipping. Because when I investigated a little further, I gave the guy a tip, found out the next day, he's getting paid for it during a night he's already working. So if you haven't written their contract yet, you may want to think about during the regular hours of a janitor and they're doing cleanup work, I don't think they should get an extra pay during that time, especially when most of the, I'd say 90% of the cleanup is done by the volunteers. So it's just something to think about. Again, we spend extra money. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Gary.
Good evening. My name is Denise Leveque. I live at 32 Apple Tree Lane. I currently have one child in the school system, a freshman here at Lemmonster High School. My two older children, graduates from Lemmonster High, graduated from a very different school system than the one he is attending. The school they attended was a Level 1 school, a school where it always felt teachers wanted to be, and a clean school. Now, my son attends a school where there aren't enough teachers, morale is low, and the district leadership is in disarray. Because he has been waiting basically his entire school career to attend CTEI, school choice isn't an option for him. We tried, but he was 113rd on the waiting list at Monty Tech. For every year, my children have been in the Lemmonster schools. I've served on school councils, PTOs, subcommittees. I've been attending these school committee meetings for 15 years or so, and when I watched the last meeting on TV, it was so disheartening. I saw a committee who doesn't know how to listen to each other, who doesn't know how to work together. And I know you're all here for the same reason, for kids. You can do better. I know you can do better. Please, do better. And for those of you who have only been on the committee for a few years, I've watched Sue and Eileen over the years. They have a tremendous amount of knowledge and experience, and even if you don't agree with them, please use their experience to your advantage. And finally, again, after watching the last school committee meeting, I want to take a moment to publicly thank Kristin for her service of 15-plus years or so to the school committee. I've known her for many, many years and have worked with her on several committees over the years. The time and dedication I've seen her put in has been amazing. She has always answered any email, text, phone call, been available to chat at any time I've reached out to her. Even if I haven't agreed with her on certain issues, I know she has always put the needs of students first and has tried to do right by them. And it's a real loss to this committee, so thank you, Kristin.
Thank you, Denise.
Good evening. My name is Barry Hudson. I'm the band director at Lemmonster High School, and I live at 10 Arnold Road, Lemmonster, Massachusetts. I'm here tonight to speak about two issues. I'll try to speak quickly to get all my information out. The first issue is the $75 user fee for Lemmonster High School band students, and the second is the lack of support for the arts, specifically banned in middle school. So my first issue has four points. $75 user fee. Band and jazz band are classes during the school day. Both have state frameworks and curriculum. The stipend the band director receives is for the time to perform on nights, weekends, summers, and holidays. Point number two, the LHS band is 99% funded by the Lemmonster Band Boosters, a group of parents that volunteer their time. Our budget on average for the band is $18,000 to $25,000 per year for music, instruments, instrument repair, uniforms, transportation costs, competition fees. Funds are also used to help the academic music classes, the guitar and piano class, in the way of guitar repairs and electric pianos. Our LHS budget from the school system is, on average, is $2,000. Point number three, 95% of our performances are for school and city events, football games, rallies, concerts, Veterans Day, Memorial Day, Twilight Memorial Service, firefighter memorial service, Johnny Appleseed Festival, Starburst, retirement communities. We welcome into the community McDonald's, Dick's Sporting Goods, UMass Memorial Hospital, Applebee's, and Walmart. We perform two times just for the benefit of the band students, the Icicle Ball Band Fundraiser and the UMass Band Day at UMass Amherst. Point number four, the fee that you put into play this year was initiated after we started our season in August. The school committee spoke about the fee, voted on the fee, and the specifics for the fee were not made public to teachers and people that needed to disseminate that information until mid-September. We start in August. Schedules and costs and expectations are sent home so students and families know what they can expect from the band program. I'm asking you to waive or reconsider the fee, given that the majority of our performances are considered service to school and community. So that's point number one. Point number two, really quick, is the lack of support. Equity with regards to the arts and specifically banned in question for the last five years, I brought it up to the superintendent with meetings and emails and conversations, and I've been ignored for the last five or six years. What I'm asking is that our band program has gotten smaller each year. We have less teachers now, we have less students in the community. When I joined, when I started at Lemmonster High School, we had 12 kids in the band. We got up to 82 kids, and now this year, we're down to 32. I'm asking that you, and I know times are tough and programs, everyone's looking for programs, but I'm asking that you invest in the band program because it's good for the community. Studies have shown that music and specifically band and chorus help kids emotionally, academically, and socially. Schools with successful band programs have a direct impact on school and city culture, and you can put over 100-plus kids in a band or chorus class, which would help alleviate overcrowding from other classes. I'm willing to work hard to bring the band program back again, and I would like to be part of the solution. I have many ideas and suggestions that could help build our band programs. I'm asking you to invest in our band, like for our kids and for our parents. I look forward to hearing from you. Thank you. Sorry for going over. Thank you.
Thank you, Barry. Anyone else like to address the committee?
Could I, for one second? Holly Koski.
Go ahead, Holly.
Holly Koski, I live in Ridge, New Hampshire now. I used to live in Lemmonster. I just have a question regarding the Emerald Green contract. That was supposed to be done, I was understanding, the end of October, and they're still here, and I believe they're still being hired possibly, and they're being paid month to month, but the juniors are working like the night shifts and these guys will work in the day shifts. It just seems to me like the whole thing is just to keep Emerald Green here until the end of June, and you guys are going to probably keep them on and get rid of the juniors. And you guys got to remember, snow removal, that that was not in the original cost proposal. I think the fees are going to be a lot more expensive than what you're being led to believe. Thank you.
Thank you, Holly. Glenn, I didn't know that you were going to be the subject of the discussion tonight, but it is a public forum. If you'd like to address the school committee, that's fine. If you'd like to address it at a later time, that's fine as well. Okay? We'll close this portion of the meeting. We'll now move on to a moment of silence. Superintendent?
Yes. Just before the holiday, we lost a pertinent member of the Lemmonster teaching up here at Lemmonster High School, a beloved art teacher, Rebecca Pandicchio, passed. I have to give credit where credit is due. Lemmonster staff pulled together beautifully and have honored her downtown at City Hall, so I would like to ask for a moment of silence for her and her family. Thank you.
I'll move on to communications. Superintendent?
We have one, that the custodial union is looking to begin bargaining with us as soon as we're ready to go.
All right, and we're going to talk later tonight about a couple of suggestions for labor negotiations.
Yes, negotiations. So this is just the next step.
Anything else? Superintendent?
Just the superintendent's report.
All right.
I'd actually like to use this time not just to talk about current issues, but to come back and revisit items that are brought up here at each meeting. One of the first items that came up at the meeting two weeks ago was about an electrical teacher coming to CTEI to support a program that has a supervision need. Currently, I've been working very closely with Mr. Fandaka. He has been more than collegial and cooperative, and we are looking at resources, not just a specific teacher. We're pretty innovative and creative. He's talking with retired electricians, veterans with an electrical background, something that best fits the needs of all our students and not just the student responsibility, but the fiscal responsibility of Lemmonster Public Schools. So we will continue to update the committee on where we're at as we move forward. Another issue this week is, on Wednesday, it is a half-day at school, which usually creates a little bit of chaos. I just want parents to be aware that your children will be leaving early, so make sure all transportation and after-school care is readily available. Schools are aware of where your children are at. Staff will be engaged in every building, and anywhere from a compliance issue to curricula issues, protocols, safety. Many of the current staff in Lemmonster will be facilitating the offerings that teachers will partake in. But it's important that everybody knows where our students are at dismissal time. Also, we, Gina Wernan and I participated last Friday at Mount Wachusett at our first step of the Changemaker Initiative. We're very excited to bring that to Skyview this Friday. If any of the members are available, we are eight to four up at Skyview. This is an opportunity to watch our students at every grade level, this is down into the elementary schools now, become activists in our own community. They want to be a part of the solution. They want to engage. You've heard of situations this evening. They want to understand. So whatever the needs are and whatever the civic engagement that we can bring students in, this is the avenue for that. So if you have an opportunity to come and celebrate with us and do the kickoff on Friday, we would welcome each and every one of you. One of the main focus for us right now is, from the district and school-based teams, we're keeping a close, close eye on enrollment. Lemmonster Public Schools is faced with the impact of homelessness, for whatever reason, and there are multiple reasons for homelessness right now, and the natural disasters occurring throughout our country and the world. Dislocated students are on our doorstep daily in need of multiple service, and to date, Lemmonster Public Schools has registered 193 students since October 1st. Almost 50 of those students alone are from Puerto Rico. They actually beat us to the door in the morning, so we are constant at the PIC Center. So we are pulling students in. We're working with the state right now to look at funding. We're watching those numbers roll every day to see if we will receive additional funding to support students, but we are welcoming them into our district every single day. And lastly, is the question of the Lemmonster Public School budget. As the educational leader of a district struggling to understand the budgetary constraints and build an understanding of a dated formula which ties the hands of city funding, school funding, I am currently working to establish a training on our district and city financial platform named Munis to bring clarity and transparency to inform future decision-making and possible FY19 budgetary topics. The cabinet staff is available at your disposal to aid in the process of this transparency. Should members of this committee have a need for clarification or confirmation of issues, please do not hesitate to contact my team, in which to provide you the information necessary to move us forward. As it's been stated by Churchill, and this is my new anthem, "With chaos brings great opportunity." I look to work within amongst my community in bringing our school district to the station." Thank you.
Okay. Do we have a student report?
We do. Come on up, girls.
You look a lot like those ladies that led us in the pledge of allegiance.
Good evening, members of the school committee. My name is Elizabeth O'Neil, and I am the chapter president of Skills USA here at Lemmonster High School. I am also a student in the health assisting program here. Being a part of the Center for Technical Education and Innovation offers students an opportunity to explore a specific career path and prepare them for the world of work. I have the opportunity to prepare for work in the medical field and pursue my goal of becoming a pediatrician. For the past four years, I have had class time to learn about the basics and importance of healthcare. We have had the opportunity to participate in hands-on experience through the clinicals that are set up in the schools, nursing homes, and in other areas of the medical field throughout the community. As a senior and a CNA, I was able to choose my own clinical site this year. I currently spend 12 hours a week, assisting at neighborhood pediatrics, which has broadened my understanding and my interest in the pediatric field. Being in health assisting has brought me closer to my goals, and participating in clinicals gives me real-world experience to prepare me for the future. As I said before, I am also the president of Skills USA here at LHS. For those of you who are unaware of what Skills USA is, the best way I can explain it is with the Skills USA motto, preparing students for leadership in the world of work. Our aim is to be the best in our trade and to be job-ready on day one. Our local chapter at Skills USA raises thousands annually to send students in the CTEI program to compete in skills competitions, and that tests their knowledge of their shop. It's a critical part of Skills USA. But I believe that it is important that we focus strongly on the community service and teaching our students leadership skills. This past weekend was the Skills USA annual Santa breakfast, which is our biggest fundraiser and as well as one of the many community service projects we partake in. We hold a breakfast that shows off our culinary students' talents, when you can eat pancakes and sausages that are delicious and all-you-can-eat, and we have fun games and raffles and even pictures with Santa, and it was a success. This year, part of the breakfast was a fundraiser for Kylie's Care Kits for Kids, and we were able to raise enough money to buy toys for many needy children in the community for their holiday mission. In the past, we have done canned food drives for Ginny's Food Pantry, and we have recognized, been recognized for our various community service projects by the Costello Family Award. We have donated time to Kylie's Care Kits for Kids, the Soup Kitchen at the Spanish-American Center, and we have devoted time to help other organizations like the Mares Drive and Theater. This year, we have taken on a new challenge. We will be making a video on the history of Lemmonster Hospital. The Hospital Guild reached out to the school to see if anyone was interested in doing this, and because Skills is mainly made of health-assisting students, we felt it was a perfect fit and that we can use our talents to make a great video. But this task will take a lot of effort, and we're willing to do it. We are one of the only chapters of Skills in the states that is not funded, but we do a lot with a little. We ensure that any student who wants to challenge themselves to be the best in their field has the opportunity to. We have students who have ranked number one in the state, and even, no, just one in the state, sorry about that, and we hope to see more students place in their shop. I want to thank you all for inviting us to speak in front of you today and for your past and future support.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Brittany Barowski. I'm a senior here in the health assisting program here at Lemmonster High School, but I also serve as the state historian for Skills USA Massachusetts. Currently, I'm working as a CNA at Life Care Center of Lemmonster. That's where I actually just came from and where I'm headed back to after we're done here. But what I'm really excited to tell you about today is my experience with Skills USA and being a state officer. Last April, I was elected to be the very first state officer from Lemmonster High School, and let me tell you the feeling of walking onto that stage as the very first from higher high school, I couldn't describe it with words. At the end of June, I had the opportunity to go to Louisville, Kentucky and serve as a national voting delegate. There, as long as the other national voting delegates, we elected our Region 1 Vice President, Grace Corain. Then, in July, I had my officer training week, and after a long and tiring week, I was elected to be the state historian by my fellow state officers. At the beginning of the school year, I had the opportunity to go to Washington DC for the WLTI conference. There, we got a lot of leadership training because it was all of the state officers from all around the country that got to go to WLTI. And also that week, me and my state officers, we had the opportunity to meet Senator Elizabeth Warren. And as soon as Elizabeth Warren walks through the room, her energy just fills you up, and we got to talk to her about the importance of career and technical education and Skills USA. And as I'm sure you know, Elizabeth Warren didn't need a whole lot of convincing because she is a huge advocate for education, but nonetheless, it was amazing meeting her and talking with her, and she really inspired us to advocate more for career and technical education. Right after WLTI, we headed to Rhode Island for the Region 1 conference there. It was just more leadership training, and I also got to meet more with the other state officers in the region. Since then, I have gone to Minuteman Technical High School to give a membership Since then, I have gone to Minuteman Technical High School to give a membership presentation about Skills USA, and we also got to speak with the Student-to-Student Mentoring Program there, which is a group of students who work with middle-school children. So we presented a workshop to them on how to be a mentor and how to be a leader. Most recently, I have come back from the Fall State Leadership Conference. The Fall State Leadership Conference is the state officers' conference because it is the first time that they get their first real big appearance as the state officers for the year. And the Fall State Conference was a huge success, and it was a lot of fun. It was a great experience because we really got to interact with some of the members, which is one of my favorite parts about being a state officer. And since being elected, everything that I have done with Skills USA, even before being a state officer, when I was just a chapter officer and working with my chapter, which means just as much to me, everything has helped me so much, and I will carry all of the experiences into the future. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Sophia Heth and I'm a senior in graphic communications. Throughout my four years of technical education, I've learned so much from my peers and my instructors. Not only have I been able to develop specialized skills in the area of my trade, but I've also discovered a lot about myself and my future plans. CT has allowed me to learn communication skills, how to learn with customers and potential clients, how to present myself and my skills, and much more. Since joining my program, I've gained real business experience and career motivation that will allow me to achieve great success following high school. CT is much more than just a program. It's a family in which all students and teachers are close and supportive of one another. My instructors have helped me grow from a shy and uncertain freshman to a skilled, motivated, and driven senior who has great plans for her future. I've had the opportunity to develop bonds with other shop instructors who, with their knowledge and individual skills, have added to my overall education and allowed me great opportunities. Over the past four years, I have worked with many different customers. I have learned the art of balancing people's needs with other considerations like time constraints, budgets, and much more. Some jobs were much more difficult than others. There were challenges and sometimes stressful days, but at this point in my high school career, I am very confident in my problem-solving skills. I'm grateful for the difficult clients and jobs because now I know how to react, respond, and solve conflict, which I know will be important in my future. As of right now, I have found my favorite area of my trade, which is working with vinyl and sand etching. With my instructors' help, I have learned the necessary machines and tools. I can perform whatever jobs I can imagine, and I am always continuing to experiment with new methods and techniques. It has been an incredible experience to discover my potential in such a supportive environment. While I have developed many trade-specific skills, I also have knowledge and skills that will support me in whatever my future holds. I can work with customers and talk to them in an efficient manner to gather information, problem-solve, and produce a satisfactory product. I am able to communicate with my peers and create relationships that are beneficial to the workplace and that allow us to create great work together. I can problem-solve everything that arises in my work, whether it is a communication issue or a production problem. Most of all, I feel very confident for work after high school. I am eager to continue in my trade and very grateful for my time as a CT student and how it has prepared me. I feel confident knowing I can use my skills for work throughout college, and I have prepared for my desired career. I have loved every moment of my experience in the CT program here at Lemonster High School. Thank you.
My name is Erin Nelson and I'm a screen printer in graphic communications. At the screen printer, we mostly make shirts and sweatshirts, but we also are able to put logos and designs onto sweatpants, backpacks, blankets, and more. I've also learned how to do sleeves, pocket logos, and normal full-size logos on the fronts and backs. All of these different ideas for screen printing were taught to me by my teacher throughout my four years in graphic communications. Most of what we have in our school store are shirts and sweatshirts that are made at the screen printer, but we also have products that are made on embroidery. Our screen-printed products are variations of Lemonster logos designed by students along with some of the more traditional logos that are more familiar to the eye. While working in the store, I've noticed that most students have been wanting to buy the sweatshirts that have the larger logo on the front. One of the juniors in our shop even designed a senior T-shirt for the kids who didn't want to buy the traditional ones that are sold every year. A lot of our seniors have been liking those designs as well. I've also brought my skills from screen printing to Skills USA, where I was able to compete against different kids in Massachusetts who know how to screen print. In the competition, I won the bronze medal last year at districts. This year, I've been working a lot harder to learn the things I didn't know so that I can aim for the gold this year. My senior project also became pretty obvious that I'd want to do it on screen printing once I realized that it was definitely what I'm most comfortable with. I wrote my paper on the process of screen printing, start to finish, and starting with the prepping of the screens all the way to the finished product of the shirt. As for my college career, I would like to major in animation, which does have a lot to do with my shop area. When I make designs for the screens, we use Adobe programs to set everything up. This has already given me a head start on how to use the programs that I know I will be needing when I begin my college career learning animation. I'm very thankful that I already have a head start above the other students to learn the Adobe suites. Now you know a little bit more about me and what I've been doing in my shop. It's been a little difficult with two teachers, but we get by the best we can. I'm proud of what we've accomplished, and I'm sure my classmates would say the same. Thank you.
Very nice. Congratulations. Gina, can I just put a plug in?
Yes.
I did attend the Santa's Breakfast, and it was exceptional for my grandchildren, and I wanted to congratulate you because it was crowded, it was a great time, so thank you.
Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
I'll move on to presentations, committee discussion, update on superintendent entry plan.
Yes, I just wanted to update the committee on the progress of submitting and presenting my entry plan as proposed when appointed the interim position. After 12 years in Lemonster, 29 in education, at some point, thought I kind of knew it all. I was incorrect. I have just about finalized the various levels of interviews with schools, city, community, parents, every stakeholder that has a part of Lemonster Public Schools. Trends in the promotion and concern for the district have revealed themselves, which lead me to formulate short and long-term goals, keeping a balance of all the levels within the school department. I will project a multi-tiered team approach to address and resolve pressing constraints and highlight the areas of positive within our school system that continue to provide for our students' continuum of learning and success. In the end, my goal has always been to place students in their needs in the forefront while promoting the strength in the Lemonster Public School workforce. A copy of the plan will be submitted next week to the committee, and I look forward to presenting it during the December 18th meeting. Please do not hesitate to contact me at any point for any reason. I am open to questions, concerns, confirmation, anything. So thank you.
Okay. Implementing safety drop at Northwest, this is the buses when they are leaving, children off, and somebody doesn't come out. Somebody's running late, they're stuck in traffic.
Yes.
And they get brought back to Northwest.
I would just ask Mike Staxton and Gary Zimmerman, they were part of the original Transportation Task Force. We just want to make sure that there's clear communication about where we're starting, why we're doing this, and what's the priority of putting this initiative in place.
Has this started yet?
Monday starts.
December 11th.
Yes. So we're here to speak for the Transportation Task Force. I think most, if not all, of the members of the task force are here tonight. You might want to stand up and be acknowledged. Brandon.
Melissa. Ray. Brandon.
Heather.
We met multiple times, started with different ideas, worked hard. You've already voted to implement most of our, most if not all of our recommendations. In particular, because we cut back two buses to save money, that's made things tighter. So I think the, there's less leeway now, so it is, I think, more important. I think the safety drop-off at Northwest is a good idea anyway, but now the problems of not dropping off kids and having to circle back are really that much worse because of the two fewer buses. So buses at the second tier are late because of having to circle around, which makes the third tier late. So I'm hoping we can implement this, and I'm sure there will be some parents unhappy the first time they have to go to Northwest, but I think we just have to do it. Want to add anything, Gary?
Again, one of the big keys for a lot of this is accountability. The parents have to be held accountable to be at the bus stops. They don't realize the domino effect that it has with everybody else, and maybe they care, maybe they don't care, we don't know, but we've got to hold them accountable, and there's got to be penalties if it continues. And again, it's just impacting the rest of the school system by the buses being late in other schools, tier one to tier two to tier three. So again, accountability and holding people accountable from the parent's side. And I think the safety zone drop-off, as we discussed in our meeting, was a, everyone was, it had to happen. It has to happen to keep everything in order with all the tiers.
Should also mention that school staff are having to stay longer than they're supposed to because of the buses being later. So another reason to set up the drop-off.
I know that the committee has obviously voted on this and had seen the proposal several times, but I think, and I know there's going to be a message from you going out to the community at large, but I think it might be helpful for anybody who's viewing this if we can restate exactly what's happening and why it's happening.
So starting Monday, December 11th, if a child is on a bus going home and there's not an adult, it usually tends to be our kindergarten students, we ask that there is an adult to take a child off the bus. Often, there's nobody at the stop. We will not let a child off the bus, and now we have inclement weather coming on top of it. So the bus will go right to Northwest where we have supervision, we have a means of communication, and the child will be dropped off there, and parents, wherever their child goes to school, need to go to Northwest to pick up their child. So we have full access to all communications. The school and the district level will be flooding parents this week with communications, email, letters, notices, phone calls, whatever it takes, just to ensure that everybody is fully aware of the protocol. But this starts Monday, December 11th.
I just want to make clear, so just for people to know, that there will be a phone call going to the point of contact on a child's record stating that your child was not let off. You know, it could be a mother that is expecting that an older child is going to be there picking up the child off the bus, and that doesn't happen, so there may be like a communication issue there, but the parents are going to be contacted to know that they need to go and pick them up at Northwest. I just want to make sure that that's clear.
So it's important that everybody's parent information is correct at your local school because that's where they're going to be calling. So if you've changed your phone number or your work number, or whatever it is, you need to make sure that it's accurate.
Principals have worked pretty hard to clean up that database. Just at open house, as parents came in, parents were asked to recheck phone numbers, keep us updated. Things change. House numbers do change, cell phone change, workplace change, just to keep the schools updated as often as possible, just to avoid that confusion.
How many students is this a day?
It could be one or two. It could be as many as a handful. It could be none. It really depends.
We're hoping for none.
We're going for none. And it's very scary for little children. Oftentimes, and it doesn't have to just be a kindergarten student, oftentimes, a child will say, "Nobody's home and I can't get in." And a bus driver will not, you know, let a child off. It's safety first, safety first, safety first. So we're not taking chances. The best key is a good communication line, so we want to make sure we're communicating with families.
And just aside too, that there is, I think we said there was consequences if there's three times or four times, if they're not there three times.
They'll be handed notification on the first time.
Right. But after three times?
Yes. It does get reported.
Okay, thank you. Do we, does the bus company keep a log of how many students they pick up each? Because I'm curious just to see, I see, and I don't want to be a sort of speculator on anything, but I see buses that look like they're half-empty. So I would like to know how many buses are out there and how many, you know, I don't know how they want to do a two-week span, do they do this daily? Do they keep a count every day of?
Not every day when we asked to draw the count yesterday.
I don't know how you get a good benchmark or how you get good data, you know, is it cold season and we might not get accurate information, but some information would be certainly helpful is that what an average daily usage is. You know, if there's 6,000 students in the system, how many are, you know, how many are getting dropped off at the curb and how many are using the bus service?
I could provide the, again, the routes and the ridership, like you said, tiers.
So the bus company does keep, each driver keeps track of how many, or you have to ask them for that, you're saying?
We ask them. They provide it every day. We ask them. They just actually do it. Two days last, actually, three days last, we provided the information today. Purpose isn't that there are 47 kids on bus one, one day 40, the next 40, and the next, the number will be 49, basically, based on the passing of the students, right? Or riding the buses. The bigger, big issue that we've had this year is 172 students have enrolled, even more than have happened every day since October 1st. And most of those students are homeless or troubling up situations. And most of them ride the bus. And so even though we eliminated two buses, we didn't eliminate the ridership that offset that. The issue is, which is we've had 20,000. If you have one or two students with parents at the bus stop, that creates a domino effect. We're trying to eliminate that. We have some frequent flyers, who the bus driver gets there, will call dispatch, dispatch to the school, the school will call a parent, five minutes later, the parent will be at the bus stop, the buses will go down. So that's the purpose of the CTE.
Oh, no, I was just curious, Tom, what our actual numbers are, that's all. You know, the average route, who's using the, out of 6,000 students, how many students are using our bus?
Well, how many are eligible to do it, too? Because out of 6,000 students, there's a majority, there's a group that are walkers, regardless.
Whatever, whatever it is, how many, you know, across that 5 million to provide bus service, how many students are using it?
I was only able to make a couple of the transportation meetings, but I think one of our Lemonster problems is just having sat watching buses forever. From my experience, like Skyview's buses are jam-packed, like overflowing, three to a seat, no room, but then Francis Drake's are half-empty. You know, so it just depends on, you know, where the school is, what the run is. So you could be looking at a half-empty bus, but we can't, the way we tier them, it just can't work where you can alleviate, you know, going on at Skyview.
I want to put, anybody putting words in my mouth.
No, 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 I'm just saying.
I never brought the word up.
No, no, I just mean it doesn't, it doesn't look like it makes sense sometimes, but when you see a different run, you're, you know, you can cringe.
But we'll see that.
But Francis Drake is more accessible to many more walkers than Skyview.
Right, it's closer, and it's later, so more parents, I think, are done work, things like that. But the other thing, I just want to make sure is our policy isn't changing for who needs to be at the stop. So it's just the, in general, I don't know if someone has got a specific situation, but it's the kindergartners who need parents there.
Okay, thank you.
I think Wendy had a question.
I was just going to say, when we did the policy on this, it was specifically kindergartners, but that there were cases of, there will be instances of upper grades if there's some reason, if it's a sped case, if there's something in that individual child's case where they cannot be left if there's nobody home. So it's not just kindergartens, even though it's mostly kindergarten, so I just want to make sure that's clear.
Thanks, Lynn.
And enforcing the bus fee requirements?
I'll take that one.
Oh, yeah. Big bad guy.
As you may recall, well, the time last year, we were getting lots of emails and projects from parents who were not happy with reinforcing the bus fee. Again, not all students have to get bus fees. Students who are through grade six are exempt from the fee. These students arise in our spread buses, are vehicles, are exempt from the fee. The only charge students from grade seven through 12, the fee is $100 per student, $175 maximum per family. Students who are eligible for free reduced lunch are also exempt from that fee, per federal law. We collect between $50,000 and $60,000 a year from that fee. It's a drop in the bucket, almost 1.5% of what we spend, but the majority of our students are exempt from paying the fee. That's where the... And that's where the rub is from a lot of parents. We're asking them to understand that their fee, just like any user fee, doesn't fully cover the cost of providing a service. It subsidizes that service. The high school has already implemented the process. We don't have to look for bus fees. We don't ask the bus drivers to look at the passes in the morning because we want kids to come to school. Very soon, each of middle schools will implement the high schools already. If you're on a bus pass, you can't get on the bus. It's done at the school level and there are going to be, we anticipate that some parents will be very unhappy if we don't let their students on the bus. We would provide that notification to the school. If last year's any indication, you'll get a lot of phone calls, a lot of emails, just four of them all.
And the bus fee is not something new. We've been doing that for many years now to offset some of the cost defray it for the transportation. We no longer receive any state funding. Solely, it solely rests on the burden of really the city in conjunction, you know, with the school department using various funds, but it's not part of our net school spending, so it's not part of our actual, you know, budget. So, it's important for everybody to contribute who has the ability to contribute. Wendy?
Yeah, I just also want to take a moment to remind people, when we were setting the policy and reviewing it this year, we've been, tried very hard to be very, very clear that this was coming, that there was a date when this was going to start, but that there was a point of contact that could be made if a family needed to pay out their fee or some extenuating circumstance, that there was somebody that could be spoken to and this could be dealt with to keep a child from coming, trying to get on the bus at the end of the day and not being able to. We've tried very hard from the, from Policy Subcommittee to be talking about this as often as possible and making that point clear. So, it really now falls to you, if you're having an issue as a family, to go to that point of contact and let them know what's going on because you're not going to be turned away. They will work with you, but you have to let somebody know you need help. And we've been trying to make that point as many times as we could.
Just to touch upon that, though, there are no waiver fees that if you're not eligible for free reduced lunch, you don't receive a sped transportation, there is a fee. If you cannot pay the fee, we simply ask you to write a note, a good faith effort, make $20 or $15 down payment. With a good faith effort, they will give you the payment until it's completed. In that case, you will get a bus pass.
Right, that's what they were willing to.
The concern is the parents who refuse to pay the fee. That's the concern. Also, many of the emails that you got last year, based on the phone call lab and receiving, it's just the same thing now.
When you said the majority of the students are free and reduced, what's the number?
The number of free and reduced?
Yeah, you said the majority of the students are free and reduced. What's, what's that number?
We'll be giving you an enrollment report either next meeting or the following meeting. The number is, right now, 58% of our students approximately are eligible for free reduced lunch. In addition to that number, any student who rides sped vehicles also is not eligible. So, the majority of our students are not required to get.
So, 58%, what's, what's, how many students are we talking about?
58% of 6,000, 50,000.
I just, I just want to know. I mean, it's, you know, I, I realize you said majority and 58%, but we still, I just, maybe I'm just being naive. I just want to know, how many kids are we talking about?
There'd be 3,538.
There are. What was that again?
Just dropped two.
Okay, all right. Now, the other question I have is this, you know, you were saying how the parents that won't or refuse to pay, what are the consequences for them and what are the consequences for us?
The consequences for you is that you have to take your phone calls, your email messages, or bump into the supervisor.
Right, I get that.
The consequence to them is students are not allowed to go on the bus. The school staff will have to try to call the parents to come pay.
Not allowed to get on the bus after school.
And what's the, I know earlier, somebody had said something that, you know, if, you know, if the, if the episode occurs, you get three warnings, something about.
That was for the safety drop off.
But are there any episodes or warnings for if they, they don't pay or they refuse to pay or you have to call?
Well, then they don't get on the bus.
And so, there's no?
I mean, they've already been warned.
I, I know, I get that, but.
Ronnie, we've been putting off the start date of this. It was supposed to be October 1st, then November 1st, so that was the warning.
What happens?
They don't get on the bus, is what has been.
I get that, but they don't get.
That's what happens.
That's, that's what happens.
All right, all right, all right, all right. I might be very stupid when I say.
You're not, you're.
Well, it's because what happens, okay, they don't get on the bus and it's, it's cold outside, it's windy, it's raining, you know, fill in the blanks.
Well, it's the parent's responsibility to make sure that they pick up their child or provide alternative, you know, arrangements for them. And certainly, you know, some of the kids are old enough at high school or, you know, are certainly old enough to take some responsibility.
Whether we say that's their responsibility or we put it out there, make sure that it's their responsibility so that we don't just leave this a blank slate, that's all I'm asking.
Ronnie, I paid the bus fee and Dante left his ticket next to his bed. He left his little pass. I had to drop it off because if not, then I was going to get a phone call that Dante was not allowed on the bus. And then it's on me.
But, you know, you're one, you're, you're one, but what happens for the other? I guess.
Same thing happens for all of them.
I'm, I guess, I must be very naive because somewhere, somehow, I can't help but think that there's going to be a parent that's going to be picking up something and going to, we're going to hear about it, whether we get a.
Yes, we are going to hear about it.
I know, I know, but, you know, are we, I just, fine, if you're fine with that, that.
You're missing. We can only do so much, Ronnie.
We've got three different people talking. Ronnie, the answer is, this is the policy. If you're not happy with the policy, then.
No, no, it's not that I'm not happy with the policy, it's just I'm concerned, what is the parent going to do if the parent gets hammed up? That's all. That's all I'm asking.
Hopefully, they'll be respectful and share their opinion and the decision will be made based on the circumstances and.
And they'll take care of their child.
Right.
That's all.
All right. Open meeting law, I think everybody knows, there's a complaint, two complaints that I filed. And under the general laws, the committee has 14 days to review the matter and respond to their findings. I would suggest somebody, Eileen, contact attorney Angelini's office since he is the legal counsel for the school committee to proceed.
Okay.
And 14 days from today is our next meeting, so. All right, any questions?
Actually, because I was, I was one of the people that this complaint is against, I just want to say that I don't feel like I did anything intentionally or that I did anything wrong. And what I was advised to do is to make a motion to have the censure put on the next agenda. So, I am putting forth a motion to have the censure put on the December 18th agenda.
I'll second that.
So, in our guidelines, and we've always done this, past practice has been, when somebody wants something on the agenda, this is in our policy handbook. Unless something's changed, maybe somebody wants to take a look at it, they contact the chair or the vice chair. We get a draft on Thursday from Chris that says, here are the things that people asked us to put on the agenda. So, last week, last meeting, two items weren't placed, asked for, were never appeared. Now, we have another one. So, the proper way, and I believe the chair has the right and the opportunity to rule on this, and that is, our handbook states, if there's somebody that wants something on the agenda, they contact us prior to the agenda being published, which is usually done on Thursday or Friday. So, that has been the past practice here for the school committee. And as long as I'm the chair, that's the way it will continue to be.
I've been told, and I still am going to leave that motion on the table, that I am, I can make a motion at any time during a meeting to put something on the agenda, and that's what I'm doing.
It also says here, in our duties, authorities of individual members, that we act as a committee, that we do not act individ, this is our membership book, page 11, I'm sorry, our handbook, that we do not act individually. So, the information that is requested by committee members needs to be done so that all nine members have a copy or an email of what the question was asked, to whom it was asked, the nature of the question, and the answer. There's another situation here, we're in violation of our own rules. So, I have no clue what you asked or who you asked, but you just said you were recommended. So, the chair has the authority to decide on the matter. And so, I have no clue who you talked to, what the question was, what the answer was.
That's fine, but I'm making a motion. And then there is a second, and then we have discussion, right?
On the Robert's Rules of Parliamentary Procedure, which we follow, we've adopted, the chair has to decide whether or not, somebody can make a motion and a second, and the chair decides whether or not it's heard. So, you can make the motion and the second.
Is that true? We just did.
I would have, I don't know.
She made a motion and I seconded it.
Okay. And it will not be voted on because this matter has not come, been placed on the agenda. Nobody knew that this was going to be brought up.
I'm making a motion to put it on the agenda.
She said, put something on the next agenda was her motion.
Then you just handle it, you just handle it regularly. You can ask that something be placed on the agenda. That's always the way that we've done it.
So, I just wanted to be on the record that I'm going to ask for this to be put on the agenda to the chair for the December 18th meeting in case it's not on the agenda. Thank you.
So, okay.
And so, yes.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, absolutely.
What happens when you've asked repeatedly to have things put on the agenda, which I have done in the past, in the past four years, and it never has gotten on the agenda?
So, in our.
Where do we go with that?
In, in our handbook, that we all sat and devised here, and nothing's been changed, it's up to the chair and the, and the vice chair to determine whether or not an item is placed on the agenda.
Can I see that, please? Can you show me that section?
Look through the membership handbook.
But I, but I also looked at Robert's Rules of Order. And in there is a clause that states that under new business, an item can be brought up and motioned and voted on.
You can't, I mean, you can't.
I'm guessing that's in Robert's Rules.
It's in Robert's Rules.
That's, that's, but it has to be applicable to the law. And that's what Robert's Rule says. Robert's Rule says, you still have to follow the law. It doesn't say, because we made, every state, everybody, a lot of people, well, many school committees across the country follow Robinson's Rules. But every state, every municipality, every county has different laws. You've still got to follow the laws, you know what I'm saying? Law first, and then your Robinson's Rules of Parliamentary Procedure.
And I would like to see my suggestion put on the agenda.
Yeah, I don't, I don't. Yeah, I don't have a clue to what you're talking about.
I don't, I don't.
It's our next item on our agenda.
I don't feel I did anything wrong based on what I looked up.
Okay, yeah, I understand.
So, I mean, I just would like to have that placed on the agenda at our next meeting, that we discuss it. We discuss making it in the whole.
I agree with you.
There are some, I have, I have some concerns in, in the complaint that you filed in regards to me.
But hold on, hold on. Just, all right, just for the sake of conversation, I'm not here to argue tonight, nothing, right?
No, I'm not, I'm not here to argue.
So, I made a complaint.
Yes.
Okay, that doesn't mean I'm right, it means I made a complaint.
Okay.
I would suggest to the, to the committee about the actions. I would suggest, nobody says anything, and that collectively, the school committee meets with its attorney and files an answer, whatever that answer is, and you'll have an opportunity to answer that.
Because there are a couple of things that were, I think, misconstrued.
Okay.
That, you know, I would like to clarify.
And maybe that could be cleared, maybe the whole thing could be cleared up. Maybe, maybe with the answer that, that is given, the whole thing could be cleared up, maybe.
So, so we really need to, so I'll give Greg a call in the morning, but we really need to set up like another, either a meeting of the committee as a whole or Greg will need to, you know, talk to each person about the complaint. But, you know, for everybody's, I guess, protection, we should talk to our attorney and not necessarily have a, have a discussion now because I don't think people are necessarily prepared for that.
Nor did I expect anybody. That's what I said, the loss is 14 days, that should be ample time. I didn't expect an answer from anybody tonight. It's just the proper way, the legal way of submitting the complaint.
And I guess the other thing that I wanted to say is nowhere did I intend to hurt anybody's feelings. That was not my intention. My intention was to recommend something that I felt answered all that we've been hearing since last April about being transparent. And if I hurt anybody's feelings, I truly apologize. I, I have spoken to Kristen individually and Sue, if I hurt your feelings, I am sorry. I didn't, I didn't intend to hurt anybody's feelings. I do have to say that with some things, my feelings got hurt.
Okay, so noted. Anybody else? Yes, please.
So, I, since I am one of the named people in this, I just want to say that we, you just asked us not to state our case or opinion, what we think or we did or did not do. I will just say that in the time that I've been here, which is slightly less than Cody and Heather because I came a little bit later, I've had the same frustration where items have asked to be on the agenda and not only were not put on, but there was no acknowledgement or anything. And as I have understood the rules, if an item is not on the agenda, then the section for that is new or old business. Bringing up something unpopular or, or difficult during new or old business does not automatically make there have, make it that there has been an open meeting law violation. Just means that there are times when things are ignored, but still need to be talked about, and that's what that section was for. And that's all. And now, Russ, you said to reserve for the attorneys, so I will.
Kristen?
In our, in our, just again, in our own handbook, it talks about those areas of disagreement, that they should be brought back before a subcommittee and discussed and then brought back for a vote. And it's all right in here, it's all in, in our own member handbook that we passed, that guides us, gives us the, what authority, again, authority of individual members, compensation, it's all in here, resignations, subcommittees, policymakers, it's all right in here.
Is it in there about, because our protocols too are something we're supposed to follow, and we had a full meeting on a Saturday talking about those protocols and the way we treat each other both publicly and privately, and how there were a lot of violations of those protocols happening, and that still has yet to be addressed. So, you know, I think there's a lot more going on here that we need to be talking about. I don't know if we need another full day session where we finally finish that protocol meeting, but, you know, I think this is something that needs to be addressed because it's not just things getting ignored that members thought needed to be talked about on the agenda, but it's the protocols of how we treat each other, which is what brought on the motion at the last meeting.
So, Kristen is next and then Sue and then Heather, I'm sorry. Just in the sake of us moving forward and focusing on students and children, why are we making a motion to vote on something that we've already voted on? I just don't understand.
Because he filed a complaint. So, if he's going to send this to the Attorney General.
Yes.
I spoke to her on Saturday and was told to make a motion to vote on it because that's the complaint that he's having, so.
And the reason, the reason I say go through the proper channels is I have a stack of things that committee members have said about me that I, I don't think you'll, excuse me, that I don't think you're going to want the public to see or hear, but I'm, I'm ready to place those on the agenda also, and that's why I said.
Well, then, can we put the stuff you. Well, then, can we put the stuff you've said about us, too?
Bring them.
Okay.
Because I don't think anybody in the public wants to see these things.
But I also don't think that's-
They're going to.
Okay.
If we want to talk about sanctioning people-
Dean, I'm going to stop and jump in here.
We'll add everything to the equation.
Just point a point of order.
Right.
Please.
I think that-
We're trying to maintain, I'm listening to all this, and I'm doing double, I'm double tasking. I think, Dean, part of the reason that this is all going on is because for a long time, you didn't listen to what we had to say.
Okay, Ron.
The process of legislating is advising consent.
Thank you, Ron.
Okay, right.
We're going to move on.
Yeah, we need to sort of pull things-
So, this, this specific matter that came up on the agenda tonight is a complaint, a complaint in violation of the open meeting law. This committee has 14 days to respond, and if the response isn't acceptable, then the complainant has the right to go to the Attorney General's office. I really have a problem with people from the school committee discussing this matter before it gets to the Attorney General's office, so it sounds like already the Attorney General's office is in conflict. But this grows more bizarre by the second.
You need to hold off for a second?
The matter is-
Set the people before you.
Go ahead, yeah.
So, Kristen, are you done?
Done.
Okay, Sue?
Yeah, I just wanted to make a point that the mayor, the mayor, the chairperson of the school committee selects subcommittees. That's in our bylaws, whatever that committee is, and I know you had a question with the CPAC when I was training you, Eileen and I trained you, and you had a question about that, and I said, "Well, that's something that you would go to the chairperson of the school committee if we wanted to have a subcommittee." So, the only thing I want to say to you, Nona, publicly, is that you, Heather, Kristen, and I were on the finance subcommittee, and it's just very sad that as a member of that committee, four of us, that you didn't feel the need to talk about it as a subcommittee, and you just went publicly. So, that was my disappointment, and I think that's where we, as a committee, need to get back on the page of working for the students in Leominster. We're totally derailed, totally derailed. I'm tired of spending my valuable time bickering, and I do believe that this is why we ended up with a budget crisis, because we're all sitting here fighting over-
Munish.
That's right. So, I personally think we need to get back on what we're here for, and that's for the students of Leominster.
I agree.
And I think to do that, we need to work as a team. I don't care if we go through another protocol session, but, you know, in all the years I've been on this committee, we have never functioned the way we have this year, and I do hope we can move forward.
And with that, I'd like to ask, because, from what I understand, and again, I might be wrong, because you filed these complaints, those two votes last time are relatively null and void, so we still have the finance committee as it had all, as it has always been, with the four of us, right? Am I right in that? Yeah, okay. So, we need to move forward with the finance committee.
Because I warned that this would be a violation of the open meeting law, if it's not placed on the agenda, and the public doesn't have a right to come to speak on something that they may want to. It's up to them to decide what they want to. Having said that, I think you get it, I'm not here to be critical of anybody or anything, I'm just trying to make the process work, we talked about transparency, and I made a complaint, maybe the answer that the school committee gives me is the complaint, and I take one hat off, and the complaint is sufficient, and it's all rectified, correct? Could be easier, easier. I hope so.
Heather, and then Cody.
One quick question. So, what if the problem is with the chair? Then where do we go from there if you're not going to put something on the agenda for us? What's the, what's the-
I never denied anybody, I don't know what anybody's talking about, I've never said no to an item. Superintendent has asked to put items on the agenda, and I've said, "No, you wouldn't put that on the agenda for..." You know, sometimes the night's agenda has been too much. Have we ever denied anybody putting, I can't remember, ever? The whole time I've been-
Not that's come to my attention.
Ever. Didn't deny something to be on the agenda.
Specifically.
Sometimes there were a lot of things on the agenda, and the superintendent wanted to add something else, and I'm like, this probably, this meeting's been on 11 o'clock at night, and we've had to pull them off and put them. Honestly, Nona, I don't know, I've never, I haven't ever taken anything off the agenda, if somebody wants to put it on, put it on.
I know what's happened to me in the past four years, that I've asked for a couple of things to be on the agenda, and it never got on.
Okay.
Now, where, where that, you know, where that problem played with, I don't know. I just know it was never put on the agenda.
Cody, did you have something you needed to say?
I just, you know, I know we've talked in the last couple of weeks, or probably the last couple of months, about going back to the handbook and looking at protocol. I just think it's really important that we do that, whether it be through a subcommittee, a task force, or, you know, the committee as a whole. I think it's a good idea that we go back and, you know, go line by line, and make sure not only that we all know it, but that we're going to abide by it.
Okay, so, you're going to handle the-
Yes, I'll talk to-
Notification with the-
Yep, to Greg. And I do, you know, sort of echo Sue's thoughts, that we do need to pull together as a committee, and we do need to work together. We do need to stay child-focused, student-focused, it's all about the education for the students. That's why we're all here, and I think that's something we all have in common, despite other, you know, differences, and it's important that, you know, we sort of let personal stuff stay someplace else, and worked cooperatively together as a group. Doesn't mean we have to agree, but it just means we have to be respectful and can follow the process.
Okay, are we going to take up 2D or not? Is that sort of just a mood issue at this point? So, we'll go to item three, which is the approval of the minutes for November 6th.
Well, wait, on 2D?
Yes.
So, I'm still confused, because-
Yeah, I don't, I mean, with the vote last week, I don't think I've got the support of the committee. I don't, I don't know if we just want to delay until January and let the new one take up?
I thought I explained it last time, the chair, whoever the chair is, but I've always asked everybody, everybody, every time, "What committee are you interested in?" And that's what committee they ended up on. So, nothing has changed, she made a, basically a motion, and it was voted on, but if you remember, I stopped it and said, you know, this is a violation, I suggested a violation of the open meeting law, that the motion shouldn't carry, but I was overruled by the process, which is one of my concerns, that the chair decides whether or not the item gets voted on. You can make a motion in a second, but it could be against the law, and that's the role of the chair, is to make that decision, and I did, and I was still overruled, so.
I would just like to say, Kristen, I'm willing to work with you, I think we need to have a meeting, I think we need to have the December 11th meeting that we had originally scheduled, I think it's important that we move forward. I'm certainly willing to work with you, and with Sue.
So, it maintains, nothing's changed, I mean, if it changes in January, it changes in January, but up until then, it remains the same.
It had absolutely nothing to do with what we were doing as a committee, the work we were doing as a committee.
Except that it was asked twice to wait till January, and, you know, people didn't want to. So, what happened in December, other than, you know, who's chairing the committee? That's the only thing that changes.
You have one meeting left.
Now, it's, no, so I-
That's why I didn't know why they wanted to vote.
I am certainly willing to work with the committee, and I think we should move forward.
I think we should keep the finance meeting on, because I think Glenn has stuff he needs to accomplish, and we can figure the rest out.
Okay, everything remains the same, we'll now move on to the November 6th minutes, has anybody had a chance to review them? If so, we need a motion and a second.
I'll make a motion that we approve the meeting of November 6th minutes.
Okay, and a second. Second by Ron. Errors, omissions, questions?
Discussion, page two, under three presentation, CPAC presentation. I said that CPAC was bound by the open meeting law, which meant that meeting notices should be posted and minutes made public. That's not what that says. And also, the last sentence, I felt was not given all the information needed during the budget process to make an informed decision regarding a request for $953,000, which is stated above. So, I want to make sure the context of that is kept. Did you get that, Chris?
Yes.
Thanks.
Okay, so, a motion and a second. All in favor? Those opposed? Thank you. We'll now move on to subcommittee reports, do we have any subcommittee reports? On finance, I talked to the superintendent the other day, and this is not to postpone, but just to clear up some of the confusion. It was, a number of times over the last five or six months, it was stated that I deliberately turned in my budget last minute, when in fact, if you look at the minutes of the meeting, I asked that the budget be put in, no later than mid-May. My budgets were done, ready to be submitted, we waited for obvious reasons. And, so, this year, it's, it's early in the season, I talked to the superintendent, he sort of set some parameters and goals, and what I think is important is that we begin as soon as possible, so it isn't a last-minute process, to start the forecast out, what increases, we probably, I mean, we're going to have an increase in healthcare, whether that's 6% or 10 or 15, but to use a number, and to start to look at what those positions are. Again, we went through the priority list, that we had those five items that we wanted to fund, if we could get the money back. We had there's an electrical teacher instructor needed, but then we stopped for a second and said, "Well, we're not sure where that falls in the line of priority." I don't know, and I think I was clear on that. I wait to hear from the administration and our team as to, these are the priorities. Mine might be different than Cody's and Nona's, but I only know based on what you said. So, getting those positions back in places by priority, and determining, let's see, what next year's budget might look like, based on sort of the things that we already know. If you can get a estimate from Desi, in terms of what, what the October numbers mean to us, because last year, we didn't place much value on that, we tried to talk about it in the finance, but we never really kept to it, and that was a million dollars off, that we never, and all of a sudden, there's another million off. So, any of that information to sort of forecast us through it, so we know what that number is. Like, we need this much money to run the school system for next year in 2019, before negotiations, before all of this, so that the public has an understanding of how we're building, you know, the budget. Now, as I'm saying, you have to turn those documents over right away, or those estimates, but at least at some sort. If we were at town meeting, Glenn, we'd have to have that ready for April, March or April, to go to town meeting. So, anyway, that, I think will be helpful, and I don't expect those numbers right away, but I really would like the budget earlier this year, or earlier. And that way, you know, we can, we're not, it's our last minute, anyway, so. You already have the number? That's pretty good.
No, but we're anxious and waiting.
That was quick.
As was discussed during the budget process last year, Leominster's school budget is based in large part on the Chapter 70 Foundation Budget, and the formula that was derived in 1995. That formula doesn't work in 2007. Only impact we can have on those calculations is making sure that we have as many students as possible as resident people by October 1st. Unfortunately, we've lost students, as the trend of the past few years, not as many as in the past. Two other areas that we can benefit from counting our recent, you know, our students are considered Ls, English Language Learners, and we significantly increased our Ls students from October 1st of 2016 to October 1st of 2017, 499 students to 690 students as an October 1st school. More have come in since that, but we categorize it as specifically. Every student that would be added to that list, about $1,700, I think, if we get to this number. I lost, set about half of the students that we lost. The more important category that we don't have full control over is the number of students that are considered economically disadvantaged. It used to be that the district would include the low-income students in the formula, you could tell on October 1st, what pretty much would your budget be the following year. That's no longer the case, now there's a different analysis, and it's the number of students that the state considers economically disadvantaged, based on participation in TAN, bootstraps, DCS students, et cetera. We don't have that number yet.
I understand.
As soon as we have that number there, the superintendent will now put a memorandum out. Every student that's considered economically disadvantaged, generate an extra $4,140 next year. So, that may or may not be our saving grace for building that budget, but we're getting close. But I talked earlier, I had talked to Virginia today, but we're all with since October 1st, that's, that's the snapshot they take. 193 students have enrolled in our schools in the last two months. They're from Brazil, Mexico, Kenya, Chile, Puerto Rico, Pennsylvania, New York, Washington, Connecticut, Virginia, Texas, Springfield, Bedford, Framingham, Ayr, New York, Worcester, Marlboro, Lubbock, Dudley, Clinton, Gardner, and Pittsburgh. These are moving, Leominster. For whatever reason, Leominster's a very attractive community. Sad part for me as a finance person, is those students we are now enrolled in our schools, we are educating those to the current cost we're, and it's the busless we are adding to class size. How much white revenue will those students generate for us this year?
Zero.
Zero.
Which is, which is why when they change the foundation budget, the formula, they need to change it for urban communities, because in towns, they don't have, or, you know, they don't have this kind of an impact, so. But anyway, that's, that's a whole nother-
We'll probably also get no money next year.
Right.
Then, when you're on October 1st.
I could agree with you more. Heather?
I just have a question, we, have you, have we been able to close the 2017 budget?
We're not, we haven't finalized, we have a pretty good idea where we stand, but we have not finalized.
The end of the December.
Have we gotten the chargebacks yet?
We used last year's, for now.
No, we have not gotten the definitive chargeback information.
Are we going to be in any kind of position like we were last year, when we weren't able to submit our budget?
We already submitted it.
When it, when it, the budget hasn't been finalized, remember, we were losing Chapter 70 money?
You don't lose Chapter 70.
I mean, they put it on hold, that's what I meant, I'm sorry.
We think the correspondents will come across the superintendent's desk, the mayor says very shortly, that if we have not fully completed our engineering report by December 12th, they could delay our, the city's Chapter 70, it's about $340,000. The mention of the city will get that money.
Right. Our new munis system that we're using is required, is, we, remember, this big push for technology in the past, that was going to save the city millions, millions, I remember it well, millions. So, this system has to be built with data, it's munis, but it has to be built, and now the information retracted out of it. So, we're 2016, 2017 solo on munis, so that's the information we'll report.
Are we able to see any checks online yet, from the Open Checkbook?
Right on your computer?
Really? Right now? That's awesome.
Open Checkbook has been online, so anybody that wants to see where their tax bills are going, gets a chance to see them on Open Checkbook. Okay, thank you. Anything else under policy, finance?
Ron had a que-
Subcommittee, yes, sir.
Just one small question, you know, how much of an impact are we going to, are we going to have with that new law that's being brought about at the State House, about no more requiring the students of ELL, that they're going to have, they can start learning in their own language versus English? How much that could impact us in terms of finances?
If we have to hire more English teachers, it would impact us financially. I think we could, I'm not sure of that, but I'm not very clear of that.
Yeah, it's been bandied about.
Right, but I don't think it's something that's happened yet.
I'm not sure if we've come up with a new ELL strategy, you haven't had the opportunity to do that yet, so I don't think we know yet.
Right.
That's up to the superintendent to change the way services are delivered. I just want to, I just feel bad for Glenn, because he doesn't-
No, I wasn't trying to-
No, I know, I'm just saying, it's up to the superintendent.
It's coming down, I just didn't know if we had gotten ourselves ready for that, that's all, that's all I'm asking.
Okay, we will now move on to- Okay, we will now move on to, because we're going to go into the executive session, we'll talk on the issue of second reading for the virtual learning policy.
Well, we can do the second, we can do that now, that.
That's what I was going to ask. Can we do that?
We don't have to go into executive session first, before the virtual learning.
No, I think you said we're going to do it first, so that.
We're going to do second reading on virtual learning.
I'm sorry, I thought you said.
And then go into.
I'm sorry, I thought you said the other way around.
No.
I apologize.
The company that was here, we use so many now, the company, the technology company that did the valuation. Was it TechEd? All right, Oz's Com, Edge, Oz's Com, Edge, for the city side, different company. They got into speaking, they did an evaluation of the system there, and maybe down the road, they could give us an idea of, and they didn't sort of leave with that presentation. I should have asked that night, but it really went on, like, a long time.
Yes.
And, but an idea of sort of next steps, and what the funding, you know, sort of what funding's needed. They also talked about a director of online learning, I think is those words that they used, and, and what that budget would be, and that cost associated with that. I don't, I think they left us with, here's a snapshot of a system here, here's the good, the bad, but not really, okay, what happens now, and what are the costs? Because if you remember, a couple of years ago, after we developed our budget, and we did all our allocation of free cash, got dropped on us that we needed $2 million worth of technology. Like, that wasn't going to happen, not then. We need more of a long, so we started, the city started spending $250,000 per year to build on to that technology. So, from here on, what is that sort of plan for that technology piece of it? They did a really good job, but that, I don't know if it's them that does that, from here